Good morning, everyone. Happy Wednesday to you. I greet everyone in the name of Jesus and certainly for our viewing audience as well. Good to have it all recorded as well for those who miss or cannot be here. So greetings and good to be with you all. Let me open up with a word of prayer, please, and then we'll get into the Word. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, to you be the glory always. Good to be, Lord, with the believing body. Lord, we are all hungry, Lord, for your Word, Lord. And we pray certainly your Holy Spirit, your anointment, Lord, upon this time together as we search the Scriptures, as we read them, Lord, as we apply, Lord, the Scriptures to our lives always, Lord. We give you our thanks and praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I was very tempted to say while that phone was going off, and you call right at the perfect time. Yeah, yeah. So anytime the phone rings, I get it. If you need to take it, I totally get it. So anyways, just want you to know that. So I've been there where you need to take those calls. So that's important. So, okay, well, very good. Well, let's do this. We've got just a little bit of chapter... Give me just one moment here. Chapter eight in the book that I want us to look at, and then we'll move into chapter nine in the book, which all... Wow, it's kind of all just kind of jumbled here. But it's all in the chapter, chapter eight of the Word of God. So, yeah, it can get kind of convoluted there.
When you email him about where the missing part is, tell him that he just needs to keep eight with eight and nine with nine.
There you go. There you go. Keep it simple.
It's not like I think you're really gonna email him.
That's it.
I'm just adding that to the list.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Carol Jean. Of course, Dr. Jeremiah, he is a pastor. You've listened to some of his sermons. He is a great biblical scholar of prophecy as well. And just so happens, he was on the radio last night as I was picking up the kids from their sports stuff, and he made mention, actually, of the book of Daniel. And his comment was that all of these... Come on in, come on in. All of these kings that we have here in the book of Daniel, if you think about it, they're just coasting, right? They're coasting, they're just getting along. But it is the king of kings that is eternal. And I thought, hey, how neat that is. That's a God moment that we're studying one of his books, and we are... And he's mentioning Daniel in one of his sermons. Matter of fact, last night, and I don't know how old this sermon was, but he did mention October, so I'm thinking that he has a new book out as well. Okay, he does, he does. Okay, so do you know the title of that book?
No, I didn't order this.
Oh, fantastic. There you go. So if you want to continue when you're reading of Dr. Jeremiah, Gail LeBlanc is gonna tell us the name of that new book that I believe came out. I do remember the day, the first of this month.
It's the coming golden age.
The coming golden age. Thank you, thank you, Gail. Okay, so let's do this. Let's take...
Oh, and I'm sorry, it won't be released till November 19.
Ah, okay, November 19. Well, there we go. Okay, okay. Bless you, bless you. Let's do this. Let's look at Daniel, chapter eight. And let's take it from the top, verse 15. If someone will reread for us from last week, verses 15 through, how about 22? Verse 15 through 22, and then we can break there and read that last part. So that'll kind of get us back into the text about Gabriel and interpreting that vision. So whoever feels led this morning, go ahead.
Then it happened when I, Daniel, had seen the vision and was seeing the meaning that suddenly there stood before me one having the appearance of a man. I heard a man's voice between the banks of Ulysses who called and said, "Gabriel, make this man understand the vision." So he came near where I stood, and when he came, I was afraid. He fell on my face, but he said to me, "Understand, son of man, that the vision refers to the time of the end." Now, as he was speaking with me, I was in a deep sleep with my face to the ground, but he touched me and stood me upright. And he said, "Look, I am making known to you what shall happen in the latter time of the ending nation, for at the point of time the end shall be. The ram which you saw having the two horns, they are the kings of Media and Persia; and the male goat is the kingdom of Greece. The large horn that is between its eyes is the first king; as for the broken horn and the four that stood up in his place, four kingdoms shall arise out of that nation, but not with its power."
All righty, thank you, Ted. Okay, and then let's look at this last part, verse 23 through 27. Whoever feels led to read that.
In the latter part of their reign, when rebels have become completely wicked, a stern-faced king, a master of intrigue, will arise. He will become very strong, but not by his own power. He will cause astounding devastation and will succeed in whatever he does. He will destroy the mighty men and the holy people. He will cause deceit to prosper, and he will consider himself superior. When they feel secure, he will destroy many and take his stand against the prince of princes. Yet he will be destroyed, but not by human power. The vision of the evenings and mornings that has been given you is true, but still of the vision, for it concerns the distant future. I, Daniel, was exhausted and late ill for several days. Then I got up and went about the king's business. I was appalled by the vision; it was beyond understanding.
All righty, thank you, Lisa. Let's take a look at that verse that Lisa just read as a closing to the eighth chapter. This is gonna come up again in our book notes and in some additional notes that I have, but it's very significant here. It says, verse 27, "And I, Daniel, fainted and was sick for days." Watch this. "Afterward I arose and went about the king's business." That's powerful, and that's a real testament of faith that we're gonna come back to. But if you would, just highlight that, underline that, because that is memorable and noteworthy there. Okay, we left off in the book from Dr. Jeremiah on page 210. Lot of Scripture, excuse me, a lot of Scripture, a lot of history here. I don't wanna read it word for word, but I want us to take on, for instance, on page 211, take note, please, of Alexander's empire, just how powerful, how mighty that empire is on page 211 there, and this route toward world conquest. We see that with many human leaders throughout our world history, this plan, this vision for conquest. We even see that today. That is not something that has been created by modern man, but throughout history as well. Then we see on page 212 and 213, of course, we're seeing this very consistent theme of kings rising, kings falling. Take note there halfway down on page 212, the ruin there of the Medio-Persian Empire. Okay, that's significant, okay? Page 213 there, not just a death, but a remarkable death there, okay, of the king.
Esther?
Yes, ma'am.
I found that very interesting, but you have rights here. History recorded that Alexander saw the prophecy of Daniel, which clearly shows that he couldn't have been written, as a fact. I found that very fascinating.
Tell me, tell us where you're at, Elka. What page?
I wrote that on my little notes.
Oh, you wrote it down?
I just in the book here now.
An observation, yeah.
It's from this book, I pulled it up for myself.
Sure, I got you. I say, I highlight those things to...
Yeah, I did highlight it, because I found it too fascinating.
Sure, to page 214.
That chapter from all these other, but then I tried that on history of Alexander the exact two.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So it's...
We have this history that then moves us to a real highlight that I want us to look at on page 214. If you would, look at this second full paragraph right before we get to the middle of the page there. I want us, please, to highlight this and start this. This is, as I was kind of thinking about it...
I got it now.
From a...
218.
218? Oh, okay, well, we'll get there, we'll get there in a minute. Hold that thought, hold that thought. We'll get there in just a moment. Page 214, look at that second full paragraph there. Take note of this, please, I want to read it for us. Through these Gentile kingdoms, God was building infrastructures that would facilitate his long-term plans. Wow, what a noteworthy biblical theme there, okay? We may not be able to see it exactly in its fullness as we are reading chapter by chapter, and this goes for any book in God's Word. But this really struck me here, particularly this statement, "His long-term plans." His long-term plans, planning, planning long-term, planning for the future. The Greeks brought civilization and universal language to the Mediterranean world. A few centuries later, the New Testament was written then in Greek, making it accessible to a multitude of nations. Profound there, okay? After the Greeks, the Romans brought peace and order and paved the roads over which the gospel would be carried. Wow, okay? So I just, I want us to, you know, to take note of that, because that is truly profound there. Also, too, that Scripture just struck me, and let me go there now, and then I'll bring it to your attention. You know, roads being paved, that reminds me of the Gospel of Luke here. Okay, if you would, please, go to the Gospel of Luke, the 24th chapter, speaking about literal roads being paved here, okay? Literal roads being paved, okay? All righty. Go to Luke 24, beginning with verse 13. What a great passage of Scripture here, the road to Emmaus, okay? And let me just highlight this to just kind of put it all together here. The road to Emmaus, Luke, chapter 24, beginning with verse 13. "Now behold, two of them were traveling that same day to a village called Emmaus, which was seven miles from Jerusalem. And they talked together of all of these things..." Jesus has risen, by the way, "of all of these things which had happened. So it was, while they conversed and reasoned, that Jesus himself drew near and went with them. But their eyes were restrained, so that they did not know him. And he said to them, 'What kind of conversation is this that you have with one another as you walk and/or sit?'" Then one of those whose name was Cleopas answered and said to him, "'Are you the only stranger in Jerusalem and have not known the things which happened there in these days?'" And he said to them, "'What things?'" So they said to him, "Excuse me, the things concerning Jesus of Nazareth, who was a prophet, mighty indeed in word before God and all of the people, and how the chief priests and our rulers delivered him to be condemned to death and crucified him. But we were hoping that it was he who was going to redeem Israel. Indeed, besides all of this, today is the third day since these things happened. Yes, and certain women of our company who arrived at the tomb early astonished us. And when they did not find his body, they came saying that they also had seen a vision of angels who said he was alive. And a certain of those who were with us went to the tomb and found it just as the woman had said, but him they did not see. And then he said to them, 'O foolish ones, and slow of heart to believe in all that the prophets have spoken! Ought not the Christ to have suffered these things and to enter into his glory? And beginning at Moses and all of the prophets, he expounded to them in all of the Scriptures the things concerning himself.'" So that happened on the road, okay? And I'm thinking of two other Scriptures, okay, that literally happened on the road where the gospel, okay, was being given. Thinking about the transformation in the book of Acts from Saul to Paul, that happened on the road, okay? And then another one in the same book of Acts where the Ethiopian eunuch comes, and he's reading the Scriptures, and he needs the believer to show him the way. And it says that on that road, the Ethiopian was brought to the river where he was baptized and confessed Jesus. So the road, the road plays a very important role in giving the gospel message out there. So just wanted to make that point. Can you tell I'm excited about it? The road, the road, it's a gospel moment there. Okay, all righty. From there, from 214, 215, I highlighted here, and this historian, by the way, will come up again and again, but certainly somebody very noteworthy. Look on page 215, right under the heading, "A Great Prophecy," about two or three sentences down, I highlighted there, his accounts of many events in Jewish history, especially during the period between the two Testaments, have been a standard resource for nearly 2,000 years. So I just wanted us to take note of that name, Josephus, yes, ma'am, because he certainly is somebody that I want all of us to be aware of, and has, of course, recorded history of Jesus Christ himself. So I know there's a lot of doubters out there that Jesus was never real, but that is not true. There is recorded history as well as our biblical accounts, and Josephus is one of those people. Let's go to page 216 for a moment. I want us to highlight this, too. Top of page 216, about three sentences down again about Josephus. It says, "Alexander's answer, recorded by Josephus, is astounding. It reflects how God apparently worked in Alexander to accomplish his purposes for his people." And by the way, and I want us to take note of that, because we see that throughout Scripture, okay? That God uses certainly his people, the Israelite people, to do his work, but outsiders, too, okay? Outsiders, too, to bring forth his purposes, his will, and that is something that I certainly want us to be aware of. And then he gives a good explanation and furthering information about Alexander, so we can certainly go through that. But just a couple of other details that I've taken note of, and maybe you have, too. The bottom of page 218 struck me here, okay? In talking about God predicting the future, using specific names and traits and events. Bottom of 218, that paragraph there, it says, "Because of our familiarity with the miracles and prophecies and providence of God, I'm afraid it's all too easy for us to lose our awe and astonishment over how plain, yet powerful, the revealed Word of God really is." We must never let that happen, okay? Remember, what God has done in the past is the key to our confidence that he controls the future, amen. Highlight that, if you would, please, okay? And may we live lives of astonishment over how God has broken into human history for our benefit, to give us a future and a hope that is absolutely certain. Underline that, and certainly Jeremiah 29:11. I mean, I think about some biblical examples of that, everything from the birth of Jesus Christ, but we can go throughout the Word of God and back up that statement. So this one, if you haven't underlined it, I think it is very, very noteworthy to do. So he says, "Remember, what God has done in the past is the key to our confidence that he controls the future." That he controls the future. Very, very, very noteworthy there, okay? All righty. And then to end this chapter, I wanted to highlight just a couple of more things. Let's go to page 221, okay? Middle of the way on that page, I highlighted this, and I'll invite you to do the same thing, that full paragraph there. "The lesson we learn from their lives is that the human tendency to seek success on the world's terms..." And highlight that, "on the world's terms," "has infected the human race since the fall, and none of us are immune to it. So like Daniel, we must keep our focus on God and his providence, trusting that all that matters in the end is his well-done, good, and faithful servant." And he's exactly right. David Jeremiah points us to Daniel and says, "Wow, what a model, what a model we can bring our attention to and focus on for that very, very thing." You know, if you and I were to see Daniel face-to-face, person-to-person, this account of his life and of his servant to God, we can say those very words, "Well done, good, and faithful servant." Okay, Elka, let me just, you said page 218, correct?
Yeah, I believe so. I see.
Okay. But...
No, I don't think that is true.
That wasn't it, okay? Well, look, if you find it, let's highlight that, because I know that's noteworthy. Let's do one more thing, page 221 and 222, if you would, please, please highlight these noteworthy, bolded statements here. First one here, "You can trust the Bible entirely, for the Bible is entirely true." Okay? Good word there. One thing that he mentions, and he is certainly a scholar in, is this fulfilled prophecy. So circle, if you would, that word right under that bolded part. "The Bible verifies itself through fulfilled prophecy." Okay? Well, what exactly does that mean? Well, to look a little further down in that large paragraph, look about halfway down where it talks about messianic predictions, okay? So fulfilled prophecy, an example of that would be messianic predictions fulfilled in the coming of Christ, and the evidence, he says, "is overwhelming. Since the Bible's remaining predictions primarily involve the end of times and the return of Jesus Christ, we can take them seriously and trust them totally." Okay? So take note of that. Page 222, okay, numbers two and three, these highlights here.
I found it, I found it.
Oh, you found it, okay, yes, ma'am.
It's not, it's a slight over the map from Alexander, okay?
Oh, okay.
211.
211.
It is important to understand that Alexander rise to power was two centuries after Daniel made the prophecy, 200 years ago. No, that's not it either. I don't know, I started this, I got by and worked with it. I have worked, looked up, and what was important, I put in my little notes.
Well, sure, sure, sure.
And for me, by myself.
Yeah, no, that's good. Okay, well, look, if you find it, let us know. 222, numbers two and three, I thought number two was noteworthy here. "It's time to study what the Bible predicts about the final days of history." A couple of sentences down, I took note of this, circled this. "He wants us to prepare for what's to come." Okay? "When we neglect biblical prophecy, we're closing our eyes to the future, maybe even the immediate future." Okay? So take note of that, and then that verse there from Revelation 1 and 3 there. So this is very, very noteworthy stuff, and that we're being invited, even challenged to prepare ourselves as well that way. Number three, "Having been astonished by the truths of biblical prophecy, we should prayerfully work for the Lord and faithfully go about the king's business." So going back just one more time to the Word of God, verse 27, okay? I thought this was pretty spectacular. "And I," that being Daniel, "fainted and was sick for days." You know, and then I'm thinking, okay, you know, the temptation would be to stay in that bed, you know, to stay in that bed, to be just struck and paralyzed with fear and with sickness. But what an inspiration here, okay? Instead of that, Scripture says, "Afterward I arose." Uh, instead of that, okay, scripture says, afterward I arose, okay? It's all getting up, getting up, getting out of that bed, okay? Not being paralyzed by by fear, by trepidation. Watch this. Afterward I rose and went about the king's business. I was astonished by the vision, but no one understood it. So to go back to that, that text just for a minute. Having been astonished by the truths of biblical prophecy, we should prayerfully work for the Lord and faithfully go about the king's business. So he he makes, he makes a very relevant point here. Take Daniel as your model, and just, just circle that, that part right there. A model for living a godly life in a pagan age. Wow, so true. Realizing you're the link between two kingdoms. Watch this. Living in the world but representing heaven. Wow, wow. What a, what an honor, what a, what a privilege. You and I are the link. The, the, this, the church is that, is that link, is that link. And good, good word. What a, what a strong, strong ending uh there. Okay. Alright. Okay, very good. Well, let's uh, let's do this.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This may be a little stupid, but the, it's the horns, you know, the big horn and so. Uh, it is seen now explained like this, this will be the different countries, you know? Uh, the four countries, the two and two countries in this chapter. And this had me confused, and I looked in Revelation searching up, it looks like there isn't like a beast explained and uh kind of different. This is like the end almost explained, so that had me confused.
Sure, sure. Uh, have you, have you read chapter nine yet?
A little.
A little bit. That, that's a, that's a great question, and we're gonna, we're gonna get more into detail about that, about that.
I, I was sort of watching eight, and I happily I got to nine, and I couldn't read it.
Mm-hmm. About the madman here, huh? About the madman, yeah. So great, great question, Elka, and we'll, we'll get uh, we'll get into that in our, in our remaining uh time here. Okay. Folks, if you would, turn with me, please, to uh two thirty-two, page two thirty-two, okay? The scripture behind the story, okay? Alright, so as uh, a- as you can see, this is such an intense uh chapter. Uh, he took, he took one chapter to really kind of lay the, the context and the, and the history, and then the, 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 the second part of it, uh really to talk about the, the horns and the, the spiritual components of it. So let's, let, let's get right into it here. First thing that struck me that I want us to, to look at here, uh if you would, and he's kind of recapping, but I think that's, that's a good thing to do here. Page two thirty-two, right under that bolded title there. Let's, let's take note of this first full paragraph. So Daniel's second vision, recorded for us in Daniel eight, is arranged around the extraordinary lives of three characters. In the previous chapter, we discovered the prophecy concerning one of history's greatest generals, that being Alexander the Great. But the remaining verses in Daniel eight tell us of two of history's most evil dictators, um Antiochus. How did I do, Nancy? She didn't know. How about, wow. Okay. Does it sound good? There you go, Antiochus.
That's.
Uh, I, 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 there you go. Good.
For me.
There you go. There you go. There you go. Uh, so Antiochus, uh who lived from two fifteen B.C. to one sixty-four B.C. and the Antichrist, whose reign is yet uh in the future, and that's uh from, from Daniel eight, nine through fourteen, twenty-three through twenty-seven. So we, we need that, we need that clarity there. So I, I would particularly highlight uh that, that, that latter part of that uh paragraph there about who we are speaking of now. Okay.
We have to read the scriptures, or at least not the nine to fourteen. Then we skip over.
Okay. Um, well, remind me, folks, did we?
Well, in chapter one, he just did one through eight, and then he skipped to fifteen. He just skipped seven. He re-read the other ones.
The twenty-three hundred evenings, I don't remember.
Yeah, the um.
Well.
Okay, I'm having trouble hearing that here. Where, where this article is going.
What, oh.
Could we just read the scripture?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Nine through fourteen.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, chapter eight, sure, absolutely, we can do that. Let's go to, back to chapter eight, okay? Chapter eight, verses nine through fourteen. Uh, and and whoever, whoever feels led, um, go, go ahead. Thank you, Nancy. That's a, that's a good, good way to refresh us all. Nine through fourteen.
I'll read it.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Out of one of them came another horn, which started small but grew in power to the south and to the east and toward the beautiful land. It grew until it reached the host of the heavens, and it threw some of the starry hosts down to the earth and trampled on them. It set itself up to be as great as the commander of the army of the Lord. It took away the daily sacrifice from the Lord, and his sanctuary was thrown down. Because of the rebellion, the Lord's people and the daily sacrifice were given over to it. It prospered in everything it did, and truth was thrown to the ground. Then I heard a holy one speaking, and another holy one said to him, "How long will it take for the vision to be fulfilled? The vision concerning the daily sacrifice, the rebellion that causes desolation, the surrender of the sanctuary, and the trampling underfoot of the Lord's people." He said to me, "It will take two thousand three hundred evenings and mornings. Then the sanctuary will be reconcentrated."
Wow, okay. Thank you, thank you, Gail. Okay, very good. So let, let, let's uh, let's do a deep dive into this meaning, because there's uh, there's a lot there that I want us to uh have some clarity on. So uh, let's uh, let's firstly look at the top of page two thirty-three, okay? Two thirty-three. So we know we have two powers, uh two powers not, not for good, but absolutely for, for evil here, uh first being the human king there, Antiochus. Top of page two thirty-three, that first full paragraph, says this. "Antiochus and his cruel treatment of the Jews provide an appalling prophetic preview of the Antichrist and the persecution he will inflict on believers during the coming tribulation." In Daniel eight, we see the striking parallels between these two evil rulers. Daniel's prophecy concerning Antiochus have been explicitly fulfilled, while the chilling similar but amplified uh atrocities of the Antichrist are yet to come. So, so note that, if you would, just, just kind of put a big, a big bracket around that, that information. Uh, again, giving us, giving us some clarity to uh the uh, the uh context here. Now, the bottom of two thirty-three, the description of the depravity, this, this really, really struck me here too. So it says, according to this his historian, Antiochus holds the distinction of being the first person in history to persecute a people exclusively for their religious faith. So note that, if you would, okay? Um, I think, I think that is, that, that is very, very worth um, ve- very worth putting a, a, a star by there. So, so in a sense, what, what came to me when I read that was absolutely erasing one's identity, one's religious identity. He, he even uses stronger language here, uh and I'll get to it. Go- going on, he says, top of page two thirty-four, religious persecution was previously unknown in the history of civilization. But as history shows us, Antiochus, and highlight this, did everything he could do to completely annihilate the Jewish religion. Wow. Okay, wow. So of course, the, the, the one ruler that, that comes to mind immediately would be Hitler, right? But even before Hitler, I, I mean, look at, look at the cruelty, the, the destruction, the annihilation that's going on uh years, years before. Um.
What, what's going on today?
Sure, that, that's right, that's right, that's right. So, so, so again, I, I, I just, I, I wanna to put the word of God uh into, into modern day and to, and to mention what, what Nancy says. I mean, look, look at exactly what's going on uh in the, in the here and now. So uh, annihilating the Jewish religion. Uh, that, that is a, a full paragraph that's worth, worth um noting here. What I starred was the very bottom half of it, where it says, they were forbidden to circumcise their sons and were required to make themselves ritually unclean in every way that they could, so that they would, oh, gives me chills. They would forget the law which the Lord had given through Moses, and would disobey all of its commands. The penalty for disobeying the king's decree was death. Wow, wow. So take, take note of this, very, very, very serious, very, very horrific there. Uh, okay, uh to uh, to, to Elka's question here, let's look at bottom of two thirty-four, okay? Where it says, he defeated the saints. Let, let, let's uh, let's look at that scripture and verse again. "The little horn grew up to the host of heaven, and it cast down some of the hosts and some of the stars to the ground, and then trampled them." Okay? Uh, there's uh, top of page two thirty-five, some reference to uh first and second Maccabees, which is in, uh if you have read it, uh the books of the Apocrypha, okay? Um, uh, uh, again, what I, what I took note of there is um one's, one's complete um, uh, erasing, uh, annihilation of an identity, of an identity of, of the Jewish people. Uh, so looking, looking at uh these books, he says, the books of first and second Maccabees, tell an appalling story of two deeply committed Jewish mothers who determined uh to circumcise their infant boys, okay? When Ant- when, when Antiochus heard about it, he killed the babies and hung their dead bodies around each mother's neck. Just horrific, just tragic, okay? Next, he marched the mothers, all of their family members, and anyone who had assisted with the circumcision through the streets of Jerusalem, up to the highest wall of the city. Then he flung them to their deaths on the rock spoil. Wow, just horrific, horrific. Absolutely, absolutely a, a, an atrocity uh there. Um, so just, just wanted us to take note of, of how horrible uh this, this king was and, and his actions, and, and certainly his motivation for what he was doing there. Um, okay, uh, two thirty-six, and, and Dr. uh Jeremiah says it, says it well here. Page two thirty-six, uh toward the top there, that, that first full paragraph, this struck me. He says it in his own words. He was, that being Antiochus, was determined to distinct, to extinguish the Jewish religion forever, and to replace it with Greek worship and culture. Wow. So the, the, the Jewish people have many, have had many, many a trial and tribulation. Um, just, just more, more and more detail of, of atrocities. Page two thirty-six and two thirty-seven. I, I, I want us, I want us to uh focus in on one that I know we have um read, or, or we have heard read uh before, about the abomination of desolation, okay? Alright, let, let's um, let, let's look at the, kind of the, the top portion of page two thirty-seven. "This unholy sacrifice of an unclean animal on the sacred temple," unclean being a pig with cloven hooves. That, that, that is, that is unclean. Uh, "Unclean animal on the sacred temple altar is the abomination of desolation." So just note that, if you would, that a way, that a way you'll be able to kind of put some, some context there. Um, it was talked about first by Daniel, and then later by Jesus uh himself. So Antiochus' uh sacrifice was the initial fulfillment of that prophecy. Take note of that too. And then it goes on to say, "The final fulfillment will occur when the, the Antichrist breaks his covenant with Israel, enthrones himself in the temple, erects a profane image in the holy place, and then desecrates the temple altar with the unclean sacrifice." And then there is that uh, uh gospel reference of the, of the same thing right, right below it from Mark thirteen and, and fourteen. Okay, alright. Uh, to, to go on, I marked, I marked just wow here in, in astonishment. Um, where, where the heading there, where it says, "He destroyed the scripture," okay? Let's look at that reference there. Daniel eight and twelve. "Because of transgression, an army was given over to the horn to oppose the daily sacrifices, and he cast truth down." Highlight that, okay? "He cast truth down to the ground, and he did all of this, and he prospered." Okay? Alright, right, right below that. "Antiochus cast truth down to the ground by outlawing the reading of the scriptures and burning every copy of the Torah he could get his hands on." That's chilling. There you go. Did you hear that? Hitler, Hitler did the, did the same thing. Thank you, thank you, Elka. "Any books of the law which were found were torn up and burned, and anyone who was caught with a copy of the sacred books, or who obeyed the law, was put to death by the order of the kings." So, so please, please uh bracket, bracket that as, a- as well. Uh, it's a, it's a good uh, a good stopping point. Let me, let me just offer just a couple of other things that by all means, please, please take note of here, but just, just a couple of uh, couple other highlights points that I wanted to mention. This is uh, this is in reference to uh verses fifteen through twenty-five of, of chapter eight, okay? Okay, uh, and speaking about Antiochus and, and the Antichrist here, okay? This is an example of a prophetic passage that has both a near and far fulfillment. "Antiochus indeed had fierce features, known for his." "Antiochus indeed had fierce features, known for his cruelty as, as, uh, as well as also, uh, the Antichrist." "Antiochus was filled with, uh, the power and the presence of the devil himself, uh, of, of Lucifer, as he marched upon Israel, okay? And he went about, uh, doing his sinister and, uh, horrific schemes, being mighty but not in his own power." Okay? "Antiochus deceived the people to ultimately ravage them. So too, the coming of the lawless one is according to the working of Satan himself, with all power, signs and lying wonders and with all unrighteous deception among those who perish because they did not receive the love of the truth that they might be saved." And that comes from Thessalonians, second Thessalonians two, nine, uh, and ten. Okay? So, the coins of, uh, Antiochus were inscribed with this title that meant "God manifest." Okay? "The coming of the Antichrist will also exalt himself so that he sits as God in the temple of God, showing himself that he is indeed God." Now, given all of this information, okay? Um, "Both rose against," okay? "And stood opposite Jesus Christ." Okay? "And for that reason, they both have a particular hatred of the Jewish state and nation." And finally, "Both will be taken out, not by human means." Okay? History tells us that Antiochus died of a mysterious disease and in Revelation nineteen tells us that Jesus returns and casts Satan himself, the Antichrist, excuse me, the Antichrist into perdition. Okay? So, uh, notice, uh, in our, in our text here about Gabriel, okay? Gabriel says to Daniel, "Seal up the vision as given by the English." But in the Hebrew, this phrase is quite, um, quite different, okay? It's, i- in many ways, it's, it's a little, a little weird even. In Hebrew, it is literally sealed vision many days. Sealed vision many days. And for Daniel, this was troubling. Sealed for us, okay? Clear, okay? Completely unlocked, is it not? Okay? Because the time of it all being fulfilled is very near, okay? Uh, at, at, at the very, at the very door. Okay? So, uh, given, given, uh, Daniel having this vision, scripture says that he was, he was sick, but, but he noticed, okay? In light of this great revelation, that he gets up and he serves. Or as the scripture says, he goes about the king's business, okay? It's not time to check out, okay? Because we know that any minute that trumpet, okay, could sound and it's time to check in, in fact. Not check out, but check in, okay? How marred, uh, would the name of Daniel be if he was known just as a slacker? Okay? Just as one who stayed in bed? It would produce a, even a, even a slur on his prophetic life. And so, sick or not, weary or not, older or not, because at this time, he's getting up in years, okay? The quote here is, "Let us not neglect the work of the Lord, though less able to perform it. A sick child's service is in fact doubly accepted." Okay? Because we are often sick, weary, discouraged, okay? How can we not serve the king? Believe. Believe and go about the king's business. "Let my service, let your service, let our service not hinder his glory." Wow, good, good stuff. Okay, I've got ten, ten twenty-six. How about, how about we do this? How about we stop? We stop on page two forty-one, two forty-one. Okay? Two forty-one. So, let's dog ear that, page two forty-one. Okay? Um, that will, what we'll do then on, in this, in this chapter, we will, we will go through, hit the highlights of chapter, the rest of chapter nine in the book. And if you would, let us move into and read, uh, chapter nine in the Word of God, okay? And, and, excuse me, chapter? Thank you. Let's, yeah, let's, let's read chapter ten in the book as well for next week and in the Word of God, uh, chapter nine, chapter nine. Thank you, thank you. I need you to keep me straight here, thank you. I need that, thank you.
I'm confused. You said we're only chapter ten in the book, but we're covering chapter nine in the Bible.
Yes sir, correct. Yes sir, that is correct.
I need to read chapter nine.
Yes sir, that is correct. Okay, let's see. Let me, uh, let me check my, check my pages. Yes ma'am, yes ma'am, good, good, uh, good point there. So, folks, if you would, read in the book for next week through page two eight, through page two eight, which will be, which will be chapter nine in the Word of God.
There we go.
Okay, very good. Yes ma'am!
You know, given the visions that Joseph and Daniel and I'm sure many others interpreted, is this, is this the only place where they, like, you know, sick and, I mean, that they had the reaction? Because, you know, all the other visions, you kind of remember them being successful, telling what they did and, you know, being a positive thing and this is so.
That's a great reference. Then, then, then go, go ahead, go ahead. Sure.
What the devil should want.
Sure.
He may have just written, but it didn't. And that been about him getting sick? My footnote, my Bible said that he had probably fasted for days to get the vision or get the interpretation from Daniel and that might have had something.
Okay, sure, yeah, yeah. But, but to answer, answer Carol G's, Carol Jean's question, uh, to, to have that kind of description around this revelation. Yes ma'am, i- in my, in my reading, that, that was significant only to, only to Daniel. Because I think even i- in one translation, it says, "Not only did he faint, but he, he turned white, um, uh, he got sick." So, yeah, 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 that's right. So, good. Okay, well, folks, let me offer a word of prayer for us, please, and then we'll, we'll, we'll go forward. Uh, Lord, to you be the glory, uh, this day and, and forever, Lord. Uh, it is, it is a very, very good thing, Lord, that we, uh, are in your Word, being nourished and, and fed, uh, by it. Lord, we pray certainly your presence into this day for the rest of the day. We're lifting up, Lord, our, uh, body, Lord, those who, who need, Lord, our prayers, the spoken and the unspoken prayer requests. We know you hear those prayer requests. You know, we know you hear those petitions, Lord, in all things, Lord. We know that you are with us, Lord. We are overcomers, Lord. We are victorious, Lord, uh, with you. To you always, we give you our praise, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you folks, appreciate it.